Call the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors meeting to order for December 5th, 2017. Roll call, Mr. Veeder.
Layland.
Here.
Little.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
White.
Here.
Maxman.
Here. Take a moment of silence to reflect on actions. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item one is the agenda received as proposed or as amended. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, motion carried. Our next item is the public comments. Anyone in the public who wishes to address the board on any item that is not on the agenda, now's the time to do so. Please come forward and state your name and address.
Okay, I am Jenny Rachel Robey. My address is 314 East Arlington Street, Waterloo, Iowa. I come to address Craig White. I was married to Willie Johnny Robey, a Marines with honors. Private E-1, has a Purple Heart Medal, National Defense Service Medal, a Vietnam Service Medal, and 100% Service Connected. He passed away August 7th, 2012. I talked with you, Craig White, about Benny Spain. The action you chose, Veterans Affair, left me homeless. I had to find shelter at Salvation Army. After three months, my time was up. I was put out on the streets. Six months later, I was awarded 100% in his benefits. Now it's five years later. I received this folder from the VA, and I have a lot of questions. Why is it that I am awarded funds now that I should have received five years ago? I feel discriminated against, and I felt ashamed, foolish. You also cut my self-esteem down to size. Therefore, I would like to be fully reimbursed for monies that I did not receive five years ago. Discrimination and pain and suffering. Thank you for listening.
Is there anyone else? Thank you. Our next item, three, is Years of Service Awards to employees with 20 or more years of service.
This morning, we have several Years of Service Awards. And starting out with those with 20 years of service, there's Jeremy Jolly from the Sheriff's Office, and Matthew Harris from the Sheriff's Office, and also Jeffrey Chase from the Sheriff's Office. And then from Country View with 20 years of service is Georgia Clark. And then 25 years of service from Country View, Patrice Buchanan, and Jennifer Pickin, also 25 years at Country View. And finally, with 25 years of service from the Sheriff's Office again, Mark Herbst. So, doesn't appear that any of them are here, but we'll make sure that they get to their departments.
Thank you, Mr. Veeder. I'm going to thank those long-term employees for their service to Blackhawk County and, you know, how they make this services that Blackhawk County provides more effective and efficient. Thank you. Next item is item four is Claims and Payments. It's a resolution that the Board of Supervisors approve expenditures for Blackhawk County.
The county's expenditures total $281,075.09. Two eight one zero seven five point zero nine. Everything appears to be in order. Motion for approval.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. This is a resolution. There's no other discussion. Please answer as your name is called.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Maxman.
Yes. Item B is Resolution that the Board of Supervisors approve expenditures for Country View facility.
Country View's expenditures this week total $64,914.10. Six four nine one four point one zero.
Motion approved. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? It's a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Maxman.
Yes. Item five is receive project updates from department heads, elected officials.
I'm Kim Veeder, IT Director. I just wanted to remind the public, it was brought up at a couple of other meetings, that we were going to post the county Board of Supervisors meetings on YouTube. They're on YouTube now, and you can also click on the link on the county's website to see the videos. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Move on to item six is the minutes approved for November 28th, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, motion carried. Item seven is the consent agenda by a single motion. Have a motion and a second on the resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Maxman.
Yes. Item eight, other business. A is a motion that the appointment of Dr. Pellegrin as a representative for the Blackhawk County Board of Adjustments be approved.
So moved.
And the effective date is December 5th, 2017. With doctors in the audience, I want to thank you for your willingness to serve.
Would you like to address the board, since I know you've only met with a couple of us at all? Just want to say, tell us a little bit about you.
Hello, I'm Laval Pellegrin, 7150 Soppy Farms Road, Washburn, Iowa. I became aware that there was a vacancy on the Board of Adjustment. The reason for my, offering my services is that as a transplant to Iowa since 1983, my state, my county is very important to me. I think that it's appropriate that we carefully review any waivers to our county codes because it's our responsibility to guard and protect and utilize our resources in a manner that's sustainable and in a manner that serves the people of Blackhawk County.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, motion carried. Item B is Resolution to adopt the Blackhawk County Social Media Guidance Principles for Utilization and Running the Official Blackhawk County Social Media.
And so.
Chris, you can perhaps give a little more background on this.
Sure. So, this is going to be an official Blackhawk County Social Media presence run out of the Board Office by Dana. And it's really just to make sure that we're utilizing, you know, the most used kind of platform amongst a lot of people right now for getting information out there. And so, Facebook is going to be the primary. I can read through the guiding principles really quickly if people would like. Facebook will serve as the primary social media tool. However, the Facebook account will be linked to Twitter and Instagram so that they automatically share the same post. The Facebook page will not be linked to anyone's personal account. A new account will be created for the sole purpose of managing our Facebook page. And these are the following types of items will be posted on the page. When relevant, they will include a link back to the proper section on the Blackhawk County website. A is notification of Board of Supervisors meetings and work sessions with the agenda included, special notification of any Board of Supervisors hearings, notification of Blackhawk County Commission meetings, video from all Board of Supervisor meetings, information related to emergency situations. And this is one of the areas I thought was particularly important, that we build up our social media presence, because when there is an emergency situation happening, false and misleading information is more likely to be prevalent on social media. So it's important that we're putting out accurate information at the same time to counter that. Also, any job openings, as it happened at Blackhawk County, openings on Blackhawk County Commissions, and then shared posts from other Blackhawk County's social media accounts, for example, the Conservation Board, or Board of Health, Veterans Affairs, Sheriff's, Engineers' Office, et cetera. We're going to highlight important filing dates related to county operations. One example would have been the Disabled Veterans Tax Credit, just letting people know about timelines for those sorts of things. We also volunteer opportunities at Blackhawk County, for example, opportunities to volunteer at places like Country View. And also sharing events from community organizations, whether they might, or job openings, things is just highlight positive opportunities within Blackhawk County. Resolutions passed by the Board of Supervisors, congratulatory posts for Years of Service Award recipients, congratulatory posts with photos of any awards given out by the Board of Supervisors, and occasional highlights of sections and services available on our website, and notification of any building closures that should take place. So, and then constituent questions will not be directly answered on social media. They'll instead be directed to the proper person or persons, whether that be the Board of Supervisors or a particular department.
Why is this any different than the county webpage for all that information?
Ah, because, I mean, for a lot of people, websites are really only active if there is a social media presence that's pushing it out there. And I think we see most governmental entities have some kind of social media presence out there, and it's just, it's just the way people communicate today.
And Dana's the one that's going to be responsible?
Yep.
She'll check with the board?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, these are the guidelines that she'll follow, so she won't have to check with the board on everything, but if there's something that doesn't neatly fall into one of these things.
Time commitment, I think, is just something I thought we're kind of exploring with this being a new position and knowing that Dana's new in her position, I think, and we were talking about delegating some more tasks to her. So I just think it's something maybe we have to keep in mind.
Yeah, and I think, I think the good thing about a lot of this is, I mean, this is all content that is already out there someplace, that we're not generating new content. We're just, we're just sharing it, whether it be sharing it from our website, or sharing the meeting notifications we already have, sharing videos that we're already creating. And so, a lot of times on social media, what takes the longest time is if you have to generate the new content, but this, this is just sharing stuff that already exists out there.
And my question, I guess maybe this is to Pete, being that these are guiding principles, and we're not really adopting policies or anything like that, does that mean then we can tweak them from time to time, or change them as we'd want to, or see a need to?
Sure.
Do some things easily?
I think so.
It's not quite as firm as, not quite as set as a policy that you adopted, so.
Okay, this is a resolution. We need a motion and a second on this.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. There's no other comments. Please answer as your name is called.
White.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Maxman.
Yes. Resolution approved. Item C is the motion that the personnel requests for an office specialist position in the Veterans Affairs Office be approved as recommended by Kevin Dale, Veterans Affairs Director.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this?
Did we start getting a effective date, so we're sure that there's no overlap on here? It used to have the effective dates. I noticed this one doesn't have anything.
I guess that's a good point. I'm assuming that it would be effective today unless there's some other date that's specific to it.
Well, we've approved them before with a date on there, not necessarily today. That's to ensure there's no overlap of the employees.
I think this is just to get the requisition started. I don't think we have a starting date yet.
W. Bunker, HR Director, this is just to get the requisition started. The position won't be vacant till, I believe, the 8th or the 11th, right around in there. So it has to be posted for three days.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second on this. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, motion carried. The next item D is travel request submitted by Deb Bunker, Human Resource Director, be approved and direct chair, signed for same, for $480 to attend the NPE LRA Academy in Plymouth, Minnesota, scheduled for February 1st, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, motion carried. Item E is the upcoming 2018 holiday schedule for Blackhawk County offices.
So moved.
Be approved as followed. I guess if you have any questions about any specific dates, we can address that. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, motion carried. Item F is a resolution that the Blackhawk County collect a total of $3,965 from Mitchell Jepson, 65% of $6,100 that the Blackhawk County paid for the Iowa Law Enforcement Academy training, per the employment agreement between Blackhawk County and Mitchell Jepson.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Maxman.
Yes. Item G is to direct county auditor to advertise for a public hearing to be held on, at 9:07 a.m. on Tuesday, December 19th, 2017. Boardroom 201 of the Blackhawk County Courthouse, 316 East Fifth Street, Waterloo, Iowa, for the purposed ordinance number 77-196 for a request submitted by Dave Peters of, at 6519 Levercy Road, to rezone 2.89 acres from A Agricultural to AR Agricultural District to build a new single-family home. Have a second, have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, motion carried. H is motion, direct county auditor to advertise for a public hearing to be held at 9:09 a.m. on Tuesday, December 19th, 2017. Boardroom 201 of the Blackhawk County Courthouse, 316 East Fifth Street, Waterloo, Iowa, for the proposed ordinance number 77-797 for my request submitted by Harold Bach at south of 4633 Gilbertville Road to rezone 2.83 acres from A Agricultural to AR Agricultural to build a new single-family home. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, motion carried. Item I is a motion that the request for purchase of capital equipment submitted by Kim Veeder, Information Technology Director, be approved and direct chair, signed for same to purchase a replacement storage equipment that is coming to the end of its life from Protective Solutions of Mission, Kansas for $34,067.88.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Any questions? Hearing none. This is a motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, motion carried. Item J is possible discussion, possible board action that the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors commit to funding the public safety consulting services fees for the Blackhawk County Sege's Board in the amount of $340,314 from the remaining 2015 AGO bonds proceeds for the public radio system. Any of the board have any comments or questions on this before we have Chief Olson address the board?
I have some questions, but I'll wait until after the, maybe he'll answer those in his reporting.
Okay, I know that this is for software that law enforcement, fire, EMS is dependent upon for the future, and I'm not quite sure how old this system is, but I'd say it's probably over 25 years in age. So I'll let you pick it up from there.
Okay, well, thank you. The sheriff couldn't make it today. He's out of town, so I'm sitting in his place here. So we have a software program called Shieldware that we've been using at Dispatch for approximately 25 years. And over the past several years, actually, we've developed a lot of problems with this software. We have login issues where people can't get logged in. We have issues where occasionally a call will disappear. So a dispatcher will receive a call, will enter that call as a call taker. That call will transfer to another monitor so it can be dispatched. There's occasions where that call just disappears, and the dispatcher that's supposed to get it and dispatch it out doesn't receive it. Hopefully, the call taker will recognize it, that it was never dispatched, and will question that and get that corrected. But if our dispatchers aren't on the ball, which they are, we'll occasionally have some calls that will go undispatched until we address that, that issue gets addressed or discovered. We have some freezing up issues with this current software system, where the whole system will freeze up, and then we'll have to restart it. And then, of course, then as they take calls, they have to go back to a manual paper system and, until they can get the system back up. So there's a lot of, without going into all the details, there's a lot of problems with this software. And we've been with the company for 20, 25 years. At this point, we believe we're the largest county. It's a smaller company, and we're the largest county using their software. So I think we've outgrown the company, and we've addressed this with the company, and they've made some corrections, some have worked, some have not. So we just got a lot of issues with this software. So it's to a point now where we know we need to move on to a company that can serve our needs. So what we have done, as I think you're aware of, we had InterCog help us out with an RFP to identify some companies that can help us identify some software in the future that we can use for Dispatch in the near future, we hope. So the RFP process, Delta Works, we believe is the company that would best serve us in identifying some newer software. It's a $340,000 expenditure, as you stated, to research these companies and determine the best software for Blackhawk County Dispatch. There are a lot of larger companies out there that are, service a lot of larger counties, much larger than us, that we think that can do a much, much better job than we're having now. We won't have those problems. So what we're looking for is the funding for that RFP to help identify another company now. We know once that happens, we're going to have to figure out how we're going to purchase other software, which could be probably the neighborhood of $2 million or so down the road. But today, we're just asking for the funding for that RFP for Delta Works.
The amount of $340,000, it seems like a lot of money to just start the process to evaluate companies that can provide this service. Can you give us any background on why this is so expensive?
Well, there's a lot of, you know, we actually thought initially, is there something that we could, could we do this on our own? But quite frankly, we, this is a pretty big expenditure. If this is a $2 million, $2 million piece of software, we can't afford to make any mistakes. And quite frankly, none of us, you know, chiefs or sheriffs or any of our staff have the ability to do this and to do this right. These companies do this frequently for other cities. But the reason it's so complicated is because, you know, as you've mentioned, this is for police, fire, EMS. It's also has, it may have a jailing. There's all sorts of different modules to this. You know, it could be the, the Sheriff's Office also has a civil process, and we want to integrate that in there. So there's all sorts of different modules that we'll want to integrate into this software. So we have a one package that serves all of our needs, as opposed to piecemealing different packages. So it's a really, it's pretty advanced software systems that we're just, we need a company to do. And we went through the RFP process, and they were the best, best company with the best price to do this. We just don't want to make a mistake in the future and do this without a company that has experience doing this, similarly really did with their current radio project.
Okay, I guess, as Ms. Deaton, we're asking to use contingency funds from the radio system. Would you go over that, how these qualify, these funds would qualify from that bond?
So yes, the bond hearing, the, that we had on the public safety radio system, the language in the bond included public safety equipment. And checking with our bond counsel, this would qualify under that, so we could use the proceeds in this manner. The only concern is that this is for a consulting fee right now. If we moved ahead to purchase the software, this could be included and capitalized as part of that software cost. But if for some reason we didn't move ahead and purchase software from this consulting fee, then this would just be an operating expense, and we would not be able to use bond proceeds in that manner. So that was the only concern from our bond counsel.
Okay, thank you.
One of the questions I think we had too was, is there not a caveat in there as far as if we don't proceed on with the $2 to $3 million project, that we may have to repay the funds? Is that in fact part of this?
Right. I mean, we wouldn't be able to, we would have used bond proceeds, you know, not in the manner that we were supposed to. So I think we would have to do something there and, you know, to correct that.
So, and you guys got in place a way to pay for this $2 to $3 million?
Well, we've looked at some of the funding we have. Now, we've had a lot of changes. You know, we went, I think you're all familiar with the new radio project that we're undergoing. And we had about, approximately 10 years ago, we had a, we bought all new radio equipment, and we bonded that for 10 years. We've been paying $30,000 a month towards that bond since then. The $911 have been paying for that. That will come due this spring, so we won't have that expense anymore. We've also got some, different with the new radio system, we'll have some different fees that we pay for the maintenance of the system, which are less than what we've paid in the past. So we will have some $911 available to help pay for that. You know, we also were considering, we would be considering a gaming grant also to help fund for this. But ultimately, we might need to bond for it and then pay back that bond, similarly to this we did for the radio project that we did 10 years ago, which, which the 911 board has been paying for since that, less than 10 years ago when we did that. So that's kind of where we're looking. less than 10 years ago when we did that, so that's kind of where we're looking at funding, funding this for, similar as we did 10 years ago.
What is the timeframe, if the consultant was hired, what would be the timeframe before you would let a RFP out to select a company to provide this software?
I want to say it's six to eight months, the whole entire project would probably take a couple of years.
So you would need to identify funding probably in this budgeting cycle for 2019?
Essentially, yes, I think when we do our budget, we will have to allocate something for the start of the software project, but in our reality, it's probably going to take at least another year before we would be signing with any software company.
The consultant agreement goes from, for a two-year period?
Actually, the contract would be, they would see us through the implementation of the entire project.
But before they are ready to contract with a company?
Right.
How long would it take for that portion of the consultant work, I guess, before you know that?
I would have to, I think it's that it would take like eight months.
Judy, could you identify yourself?
I'm sorry, Judy Flores, Director of the 911 Dispatch.
I believe that would be, the consulting within a year's time would identify the best software company for us at that point in time, then we would have to decide if we wanted to move forward, you know, probably based upon the cost, but that would give us plenty of time to identify a lot of the dollars that we would have available to pay, so ideally, it would be nice if we could do what we did when we did the radios, the radio project we did 10 years ago, does it in a similar way, where our 911 funds coupled with hopefully a gaming grant and some other funding sources would pay for that referendum that we most, I'm assuming we would have to do.
Oh, you mentioned about clumping everything together, isn't everything under 911 now? You said something about civil and stuff like that, you'd be adding that, adding that on to the.
Well, that, yeah, because currently, there are, there's a lot of different ways you can do some of the software program, you could buy just a Dispatch program, and then the sheriff could go out and buy his own civil processing paperwork, which is actually what he has now, is separate now, so this, a lot of these, a lot of this data is compiled together, so we don't have to sometimes go to different data sources or programs to search for data, but it would pay for, we would look at all those modules and determine what modules we need, some of it based upon the cost, because you may have a basic Dispatch package that's X amount, then you may have your civilian portion that's an X amount, your jail portion that's another amount, so we'd have to determine which modules we would want to purchase based upon that RFP process and what the needs are. I can't, I don't want to speak for the sheriff whether he needs a jail module or he would need the civil module or not, I, you know, this time, I don't know.
This RFP went out under the SEJIS Board?
It would, yes.
I mean, I guess that's what indicated here in the, in this item, so SEJIS Board hired InterCog to put together the RFP for the consultant?
That's correct, yes.
If we hadn't had the proceeds from the radio bond, was there an alternative or were there other options, I guess, considered?
Well, one thing we might have had to do is just delay it a little and accumulate the funds with, once we flip the switch in the new radio project, which we think will be in January, then, and once we pay off this other bond in the spring, then we'll start accumulating dollars, and then we would have had to accumulate our own and more likely pay for it, but it would, I don't know, they would have delayed it a year, but it could very easily delayed it a year.
So we could maybe utilize those funds at a delayed time to actually do the consultant as well?
It's possible.
I mean, that's something to consider.
Yeah, it's possible, but that would probably delay it at least a year.
Yeah, but it's a 25-year-old system now that's been, was that in a five-year plan of ours, I guess somewhere, and somebody says it's been identified, I guess, in the last few years that this was coming up?
Probably the last year was the most eye-opening for us, that we had to do something.
No, but was it on a plan, was it planned for?
No.
It wouldn't have been in our plan anyway, Linda.
No, but it had been.
No.
Should be in there.
But in theirs, I was going to say.
Yeah, but I was going to say, when you said our plan, it wouldn't have been in our.
No, in a plan, I'm sorry.
It, no, I'm sorry, yeah, I wasn't sure if you, as far as the Dispatch process goes, we've been talking about this for a number of years, but the bottom line is, it's a big expenditure, and we knew we wouldn't, we were not able to fund it, so we've just been trying to work with the software company to make fixes, and it's just getting to a point where we know we're going to have to do something before we have larger problems. The thing that scares me the most about this software is when you have calls disappear, and you have someone calling back 30 minutes later saying, "I called for," it could be something simple as a stolen bicycle, or it could be an ambulance call, and one didn't get dispatched, well, that's a very, very serious problem. If we've identified that we have a problem with the software, and we have a very serious situation occur because of it, that we're very concerned about what the end result could be, so, you know, we don't look at this lightly, this is a large expense, but we can't, we need to make sure that we can do our job without some critical errors.
So if a citizen calls in, it isn't handled in a different way, you just, not, what I just heard you say was bicycle and ambulance, that's quite a bit of difference, wouldn't it be handled in a different way anyway?
Well, what happens with Dispatches is if I'm the call taker, I will answer the phone call, and then I will enter that information into my terminal, and then if Judy here is the one doing the dispatching to the ambulance or police, what she will do, when I'm done, I'll hit send, it goes to her computer, and then she dispatches it out, I pick up the next phone call. So if I don't notice that she didn't dispatch it because I might be on another phone call, you know, that's where.
It'll be delayed.
It'll be delayed, that's where the serious problem occurs, so it, they're actually handled the same way, is that I enter it and then it jumps over to her computer screen and she dispatches it, and she can dispatch it simultaneously while I am getting more information from the more, so I guess you're kind of right, I will, I could be on the phone saying, okay, you know, if this person needs to start CPR, I can give CPR instructions, and I can be communicating to her at the same time by sending more information either verbally or by computer, depends on how it has to operate, so they're handled somewhat differently, but the mechanics of it are the same.
So the current software package lasts 25 years, which is a pretty good run, do we know approximately how long the software packages of today are good for or useful?
Well, they constantly upgrade their systems, so like, for example, the current system we use now, we will contact them and said, you know, we would like to have the ability to do something, and sometimes they'll say, you know what, you're the third agency, we're working on that, and then maybe that feature will come about, and sometimes it may not. The problem is that, you know, again, they are a smaller company where they're large, we believe that we're their largest customer, it's for a lot smaller communities, and we've just outgrown it, and I know they've been bought out at least once.
Probably twice.
Twice, okay, 25 years.
Do we know the approximate annual cost for the current package that we use?
Well, each agency, you know, for Dispatch, we pay a maintenance fee for all of our different interfaces and the licenses, and it's probably $17,000, $18,000 a year, and then the city of Cedar Falls has to pay X amount for the models that they use, because everything uploads from Dispatch into a records program, so everybody can have access to it, so each agency has to pay that portion, which would continue if we did a new system, which would again help possibly with some of the maintenance and funding of it, but all in all, I would say, probably, I don't know, maybe $70,000, $80,000 a year expended by the various agencies, could be more than that.
And those costs would most likely remain or go up slightly?
Again, we don't know that, I would expect that it probably would, and if, you know, something down the road happens and, say, Shield decides to sell to a bigger company, we could probably expect our costs to go up as well.
My concern in asking about the five-year plan, if it's not been in your plan and it's a 25-year system, 25-year-old system and was needing obviously some repairs, they didn't just all show up this last year, is the option of using the $340,000 that the county has available in the radio system fund, but the $2 million to $3 million project that's probably hanging out there then, that the county also may be looked at to be responsible for, since we haven't identified funding for that, and that for the most part, I know, just looking at the notes provided by the sheriff, and he and I have had some discussion on this already, so, but I'm sorry, he's not here, but when this all started is about a year ago with the RFP process and that some of that, that none of this information came before the board, we weren't approached with this kind of pending issue, concern, the option for the, and I understand that there's, Mr. Little sits on that board, so we know that, but when it takes the decision of five board members, it seems negligent in some way that we aren't advised of all of this before the day that supposedly we need to vote on it so that you can take it back to your board, and I apologize that that seems to be a criticism for something that you feel is much needed, but I know that those bond funds, we could use them for other things. We're coming up to some pretty important millions of dollars of decisions that we have to make as a board, even in this next year with Country View, with a possible rollback decision that could cost us a million dollars, so there are several things pending out there that I understand the need for the $340,000 and for going forward with this and seeing the need to do it as soon as possible, I guess I would like to see, were we not able to go ahead with the $2 to $3 million, that not to fall to the county where we to give you this funding, that that would be the responsibility of SEJIS Board to come up with that, just in protection of the county, because it is possible we could have, if you're looking for the county to fund that $3 million project is possible, we'd have to delay it. Yeah, is that possible, or what are your thoughts on that, I guess?
To delay this project, well, we would just continue doing what we have been doing, we would just continue to work with the company to try to do these improvements, but we're of the belief, I mean, some of the times, sometimes when we come to them and say, hey, we have this issue, they'll say, well, we can't duplicate it, you know, and I'm not falling, they probably can't duplicate it, but it is occurring, and so it's, we have been dealing with that for I don't know how long, a few years?
Yeah.
And, you know, we were hoping they could fix the problem, but the problems continue, so, you know, five years ago, we had absolutely no idea we would be coming forward doing this, because these problems have just been occurring, you know, in the last few years, and, you know, your hope is always that they can fix this, and some of these issues aren't getting fixed, and it's becoming a big concern, and we're beginning, wonderful, ever get fixed, and so that's kind of what puts us where we're at now, I wish we could have predicted this years ago, but, you know, you don't, we don't take this lightly, this is a lot of dollars, and we, you know, hoping if we can get this fixed, we're in good shape.
I guess, you know, these funds were primarily for, or were for the radio system, and I understand the ability to use them here, we're coming to the end of this project, and we have the contingency of $700,000 plus, if we use the $360,000, that only leaves $300,000 left for perhaps items that are not yet completed with this new radio system, I guess, Susan, I know, has looked at these figures, and for the actual contract, I think we seem to be pretty much on target with the, pretty close to the $8 million cost of doing this radio system, so I guess if you could address some of those issues with this?
So the way it currently stands, we are looking at having approximately $762,000 remaining, the total bond proceeds was $8,745,843, and so, yes, most of our contracts, we have about 2.7, that includes the contingency remaining in that fund, and so we just had a discussion with the consultants and the sheriff on purchasing additional spare parts, and so that is going to use up some of that $762,000, so the $340,000 would pretty much use up all of that contingency on the radio project, so.
Didn't we not talk at one time about some of the maintenance and things like that that would need to be a part of this going forward?
I think, well, I'll let them address that, but I believe that is a responsibility of E911 to pay for those costs.
We have, and we budgeted for the maintenance costs, the tower leases, maintenance costs for like the generators, and all of that stuff will fall into the 911.
Could we do something like loan SEJIS the funding with the responsibility being theirs, I guess, to make, I guess, what I, my fear is that that puts the county really in place to be responsible for the $340,000 for the consulting, were we not to go forward with the $3 million project, then that becomes our liability and we have to pay it back?
I think, I think that would be, you know, if, if we were not be able to move forward with the project under the requirements of the grant, I think it'd be reasonable that those $30,000 a month payment could go to repay that loan. But I'm sure they can't make that commitment to us at this point?
No, but their board meeting is next, this week.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow morning.
Yeah, so is something you could take back to your board?
Is there a time element on this?
As soon as possible, right, we heard that, I heard that.
Well, with the RFP, for the consultant, I think we were allowed 30 days to sign the contract with them after they, we picked them, you know, through the process of looking at the ones that we received, we may be able to get an extension with them, I talked to Brian Shown yesterday from InterCog, and we may be able to get an extension from the consultant before signing the contract for another week or two.
I'd prefer that.
Mr. Sheriff, would you rather, would the board rather use general fund reserves to commit for this consulting fee instead of the remaining proceeds, so you don't have any issues there, or, I'm not sure if that's.
I think we've been burning through the reserve on it, we ain't done yet, so I'd just simply leave that alone, especially until we get a good picture of this budget here in the next few months, with the Country View situation, the commercial tax, and so forth, plus we've got some major projects out there, the jail parking lot, we don't know if that's going to be completely funded, so I'd rather we stay away from that reserve. It's not a reserve anyway, we're spending it.
And your question, just using the general fund versus using those bond proceeds?
Right, I mean, if you're planning on E911 paying that back, or?
Well, I guess that paying it back would be on the event that they wouldn't move forward with the purchasing of new software.
Yeah.
Be my understanding.
And I assume you'll begin work on the funding of that $3 million fairly soon?
Until, yeah, we've, we've got a real good grasp on where we're at with this new radio project and what we'll be paying in the future compared to what we did in the old system, and then as well as with the bond that we paid off, so we're kind of getting, like you do every budget year, we're getting closer and closer, we just need a few more months to really, I think, have a much more solid grasp of what we'll be able to pay on a monthly basis if we were to move forward with this project, by the time this project would move forward, we would have a very good idea of where we'd be dollar-wise.
What's the pleasure of the board on this? Want to take action on this? Want to take action on this?
Pete, I'm the vice chair, voting member of CGIS. Would I be allowed to vote today?
Yes, I don't see any conflict there at all.
Or whenever we voted.
I can openly say if I vote today, it'll be no, I'd rather you take it back to your board and at least ask for that consideration. That's my opinion.
Let's have a vote on it, I'll make a motion.
Do we have a second? I'll second the motion. I'm gonna do this as a resolution. There's any other discussion? Please answer as your name is called.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
No.
White?
No.
Layland?
No.
Bagman?
Yes, motion failed. You have to bring it back to us.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item K is a, is a Country View update question and answer session.
Morning Dennis.
Morning.
Morning Board.
Dennis Coleman, Administrator, Country View. Probably the most important thing is a week from today, I'll be meeting with a company called Healthcare Services about privatizing some of our services out there. We've had some estimates that the savings could be 200 to 350,000 a year, so I will be meeting with them next week. I've been gathering information for them, so. In our trip to Dubuque, we started this here a couple of weeks ago, they have brought their finance in that in-house there, they have a person there and I'll be bringing that forward to the board, maybe move forward in that direction. So some cost savings that way rather than, than using an outside firm for that. Is there any questions I can answer?
Yeah, a couple of things I picked up. I went to Dubuque the day before Thanksgiving to, to tour the facility and they had one thing that they call a PRN pool and it was nurses that, that formerly worked there, but had gone on to work at the hospitals, but kinda stayed on as kind of a reserve pool that could be called up. And that was one of the ways that they weren't using agency and I really liked both that, that, you know, they weren't paying, they were paying these nurses well, but they weren't paying the exorbitant rate that the agencies charged, but they were also nurses that were familiar with, with, with the patient or with the residents. They also had 12-hour shifts for the RNs. I know that's something to, that was some, the only we'll have to consider when we do contracts was the 12-hour shifts and the mandated overtime, whereas if there was somebody calling in, they could mandate that they work either four hours after their shift or four hours before their shift. And those are kind of the three strategies that they were using to really avoid using the nursing agencies, which I'd like to see us get away from.
Yes, yes. And you mentioned the 12-hour shifts, that's something that would have to be negotiated in the bargaining contract, so.
What is their census currently, Dennis?
Out there? 101 in the nursing facility side and 34 in the ICFID unit, so a total of 135.
Susan, has anything changed in regards financials, one way or the other?
Um, no, not that I'm aware of.
Yeah.
The MCOs, there is quite a bit of money that they haven't reimbursed us for, what's the status of that?
Okay, correct. We are going to, this is an estimate, we're gonna get an increase of approximately $25 per day on our Medicaid residents, which the bulk of ours are. So that's going to roughly be probably about $850,000 boost in a year's time, so. The Department of Human Services, they were working on a project trying to, they had presented to the feds, but that was voted down, so now they're working on this rebase for nursing facilities currently, so we're expecting that probably to come in January, possibly February, so. And that will be retrobed back to July 1 of this year.
Approximately how much in total that equates to?
It'll be roughly the rebase that we're gonna get back from July 1 will probably be about a half a million when it comes. So that 880, 850 to 880, that would be on an annual basis, so.
Mr. Sheriff, were you talking about the, the amount that we did not receive from the PMI unit for the United Healthcare?
That, that's certainly one of them, yes.
So that, that amount, we are still looking at, the estimate for the amount that we should have been paid that we didn't is 583,000. That was through August, that, that's what you?
Correct, correct. And we still don't have that corrected, thought we did, but now they're overpaying us, so there will be a takeback. These MCOs are having quite a struggle. They're paying us at our ICFID rate rather than our PMI rate, so.
So we now only have one MCO that is, that we're working with, or do we have two?
Two.
Two of them, I thought we had two drop out.
No, we've had one drop out and then one of them will not accept any new clients from Mayor Healthcare that dropped out, so.
If I ask, work with Brighton to come up with a formula on what's the, for economics of, of the residents to nursing staff ratio, have we gotten that information?
No, I've constantly, and I said it's difficult, when I'm meeting with this company next week, I have preliminary meetings with them, they said that that's something they can do, so.
Isn't that set by the feds, Dennis?
Uh, minimum numbers are, but.
Yeah, I mean, the, I understand the ratios is set by federal or state, but what is the right numbers for us to be more, the most effective? You know, is it, you said now we have 101 in the nursing side, which we lose about 20% of the cost to operate that we do not get reimbursed for. So I'm asking, what's the racial that makes the most sense? Is it 50 in the nursing side? Is it 70? What, what is the right number and do we have to rely on Brighton to give us that figure? Or can you establish that?
I can certainly, I don't have that number with me today, but I, it's something I could certainly work on.
I mean, we've had recommendations from County Social Services in the past on what that number might look like and I think it was closer to 50 or 60.
As you reduce your census, your reimbursement is gonna drop quicker than what your expenses are, so, you know, it's gonna take a period of time for it to level out, catch up.
And I understand we, we would work to relocate whenever possible individuals into more of a residential setting.
Crackers.
Are we doing that now?
Yes.
Have we had some transfers recently?
Uh, probably our last one was about a month ago and we work weekly with the MCOs, in particular United Healthcare. And they ultimately have control of it and assist in finding placement for them, so.
And are we doing, we're not taking any new admissions, right?
We're taking PMIs because those are, it's profitable for us, so.
And have you looked at whether we'd be eligible to have additional PMIs with those that are under age 65?
Uh, currently, the State of Iowa, they have to be over age 65 to get the PMI rate, which is right around $300 per day. And our relationship with County Social Services, anybody that's under the age of 65, most of them, they now do pay us a, of an amount to care for them because of the extra staffing needs.
So have you been working with those to address that issue?
Yes, in fact, we're having a meeting with Monica next Monday, I believe it is, the 11th.
We used to have about 10 PM, right? Do we have, is the?
10 to 12 right now.
Oh, still, okay.
In fact, we've done some room changes out there so that we can expand that population, so.
Still quite a bit of FMLA?
Yes, just shy of 10,000 hours. And estimated it's probably just shy of $100,000 that it's costing us. Either overtime or you're paying a full agency, so.
Thank you.
That's, there's, seems like two or three times a week I, I get the email that we have another person going on it.
That was something Sunny Crest said they had, didn't have at all.
They do not have that.
Anything we can learn from them would sure be of benefit.
Yeah.
Those are doctor-approved?
Yes, they have to be.
Yep. But there are some things we could do, working with doctors perhaps, to making sure we are following the guidelines. It's not just indicative to our culture at Country View, it's something that we need.
Next week, we're gonna have an opportunity to have legislators here at a work session after our board meeting. If you could come up with some ways that the state could benefit this facility, I'd appreciate that.
When, on the FMLA issue, my talks with, with Sunny Crest, because their director also was formerly an HR director, so had a little bit experience with it, and her understanding was that this intermittent FMLA is, is a much higher burden of proof than doctors have, but that's what we're having out there, so it just seems, this is bizarre that there would be so much in one place.
As said earlier, the doctors have to sign off on it and I don't know if they're, if they've got some concerns if they don't sign off on it, that they might be hoping to some litigation, but.
I don't, I don't think we can speak for the doctors.
No.
Any other questions, Mr. Coleman?
Thanks Dennis.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We move on to any reports, information from the board. Hearing any, we're scheduled to go into closed session. We're doing performance evaluations.
Okay.
Is that the correct, proper way to do it, Pete?
What did you do? I couldn't.
We're, we have these closed sessions and we have a motion and a second to.
Table indefinitely.
Cable indefinitely.
Table all of them, exactly.
Yes.
You know, that's, that's the proper thing to do, you did the right thing.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
Hey, Tim, hold on just a second. She said.
Entertaining motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned, thank you.